Otherwise I don't get a view.
Okay, um. So it's a six thirty-two, we'll call to order the committee, the whole public works environmental services and facilities meeting Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Before I call for the approval of the agenda, I'd like to, uh, request that we, um, split item eleven. So item eleven A is listed in the land tribunal, drainage hearing and minutes of closed session dated January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. So, uh, I'd like it to split to, um, the land tribunal item and minutes of closed session dated January fifteenth as eleven A. And then item eleven B would be the drainage hearing. Moved by the deputy mayor, is there a secondary?
Second.
Okay, yeah, councillor Smale, and all in favor? Okay, that's carried, thanks very much. Um, and item three is the disclosures of community interest in the general nature thereof. And as circulated by email to members of the committee today, the reason that I wanted those, that item split was I have a, uh, declaration to make with regards to item eleven D. The closed session for the drainage hearing, and that's because respondents in the drainage matter regarding the JRDR are my wife's parents, my in-laws. So since that drainage matter has been elevated to judicial proceedings, I am accusing myself from discussions relating to that. And so I've, per the municipal conflict of interest act, I've put my declaration in writing and submitted it to the deputy clerk prior to tonight's meeting. So, does anyone else have any disclosures this evening?
I'm here.
Okay, and just for the procedural leave, so for item eleven B, then drainage hearing, uh, once we come out of closed session for eleven A, uh, I'll, I'll report out of the closed session. And then excuse myself from the council chambers, and the mayor will chair the section, the section eleven D as it pertains to the drainage hearing. So this evening, we also have our, um, solicitor will be joining us just after seven thirty P M. So if we can guide our discussions with that in mind, um, because he bills by the hour, so, um, we'll just be mindful of that as well. So, uh, um, item four is business arising from the previous public works environmental services and facilities committee minutes. So does anyone have any business arising that they'd like to raise? Councillor Robb.
Just, I'm looking at page two of five, um, seven, number seven for the fire. It suggested the fire department, let's take the public education initiative, remind residents to keep their driveways clear. I just wondered if any, if anything had been done, you know, this is anything written in the paper or like that, is that?
Chief.
Am I right on that? That was part of the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Just wondering, any steps have been taken there?
Go ahead, chief.
That is correct, uh, no, that has not happened as of yet.
Okay, any other, I guess it's, uh, fourth quarter, uh, report questions, that's page, uh, oh, three or five. Is, is there a, just wondering, uh, we were talking about getting signage up, gas tanks, signage up and stuff. If anything had further done, further longer signs have been activated, or just, we're still in the process?
Track of operations.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, the, those signs haven't been up, but they will, uh, moving forward, so first up, speak yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Okay, so that's, uh, all for, uh, item four. Um, item five is delegations and presentations, we have Fort Town Night Run. And, uh, your representative, sir?
Yes, sir, my name is Michelle LaRose, I'm the president and the race director for the Fort Town Night Run.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, what we're asking, uh, from the township is for the, uh, partial closure of one lane of Windmill Road. We're gonna be coming off, uh, on May fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, our run will start at about eight thirty at night, um, for the ten K. Um, we're gonna come off County Road Two, now County Road Two, we've already spoken with United Leeds and Granville Campies. And we are gonna take the southern half of that road. Uh, there'll be cones on the, on the, uh, in the middle of the marriagen, and the two police officers will be controlling the flow of traffic on the north side, just like we did last year. Um, Windmill Road again will be only on the south side we'll be using, so there'll be cones in the middle. Um, it goes, like, I'm looking at the map right now, you got this cute little thing here. Um, it goes about something about a quarter down the way, so a little bit past the Battle of the Windmill, probably about two hundred yards or so. And then we kind of come about and return towards Prescott. Um, the friends of the Windmill have asked me at the, uh, when I got them at the Granville Historical Society's annual, uh, meeting, general meeting. Uh, they've asked me to, if they can take care of the water table, which will be there too, on the, on their property. Uh, and we will also set up a first aid tent, uh, which will be actually taken care of by the Ventura medics from Ottawa. So, this year's a little bit different with the, the, um, Fort Town Night Run. There are three major aspects that have changed. One is that we are currently in the procedures of actually becoming our own charity, uh, in order to help out more youth groups. Uh, in order to do so, we had to build, uh, create our own constitution, our bylaws, and have trustees. You can find that all on the website, and so we've, basically, it is now not just a one-person operation. It now has basically trustees and a committee. Um, number two is that we also run the annual charity raffle, which helps us to actually highlight, uh, our whole area throughout eastern Ontario. Uh, we go to twenty different locations, uh, within a ten-week span. And as we're basically, um, selling raffle tickets, we're letting them know about the Fort Town Night Run, where it is, what kind of things are happening in, uh, from Cardinal, Prescott, right? Brockville, Kempville, Spencerville, we're letting people know about our whole, our whole area, and how we want to help the, everybody out, all the youth groups. So that's one of the biggest things that we are doing also. Um, and this year, unlike last year, I went to a race director summit. In Canada, um, races under ten thousand registrants or participants, uh, do not have a proper risk management protocol. We decided to be the first. So with the help of Chris, uh, who is the chief medical officer of the Boston Marathon, we are creating that. And we also have, uh, an advisory committee that is, uh, made up of two physicians, um, a risk management expert, uh, an E M T director, uh, a director of physiotherapy. And, uh, a fire chief in Prescott. So we have basically a committee of professionals to help us out, to make sure that protocols are in place, and that's why there's going to be a first aid, uh, tent at the Windmill. Because, um, it's a little bit of a blind spot for us in that area, to get the ambulance out there fast enough. We want to make sure that we have somebody already out there to give first aid if needed.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, it's, uh, item seven A on our agenda this evening is there's a, uh, a staff recommendation as it pertains to, uh, the ask from this, uh, delegation. Are there questions for our presenter folks, Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted you to be aware, because I don't know whether you've looked at the area, but the, since last year, and I don't know how far east you intend to go on Windmill Road. But we've blocked the road considerably just further west than it was last year.
Okay, so if I just go onto your map, which is there? So, if you go on your map, Windmill is here, we're probably going about ye far.
Okay, I think that's about where the barriers are now.
Okay.
Okay, councillor Robb.
I guess, uh, this is probably for came to the item, we, we had the advanced notice about, uh, this, you alluded to in number seven, or? Yes, the Fort Town Run seven A, but I had a question, it said in, in your briefing note that we received prior to the meeting. That, uh, the people on Windmill Road and in the area will be notified.
Yes.
Prior to and in advance, I just, my question is how, do you notify them, do you knock on doors, do you send them letters, do you, how do you, how do they? The reason I ask that question is that it was one year, uh, this is, Mr., uh, my colleague, Mr. Sayle, the mayor, might recall this, but in the previous council. We had to kind of, uh, and a last-minute notice adjust when North Granville was holding a run, and there was something about a culvert bridge being, uh, being out at the time. I think it was County Road forty-four, and the bridge was out, so they had to alter their plans, and then they came here at the last moment. And we, we accommodated them, as, as good neighbors do, but we ran into some difficulty with our residents that, that Saturday, when the bike, I think it was a bike, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a biking event that took place, so we ran into, that's, that's the reason for my question, that's the background, just, uh.
Sounds great, so part of the, uh, actually, uh, so I'll answer both. Um, so part of the, um, uh, the first, the first part, um, last year what we did is we provided letters to each of the residents. Um, I felt although that was good, a lot of words, um, it's kind of boring, and a lot of people probably did read it. But it just didn't give that kind of spark, so this year we're gonna make posters that will actually provide all the information. Um, and, and they'll have, uh, not only the information point form about, you know, what we're doing. But if they, you know, if they want to leave, let's say, and, and they've, they've noticed the volunteers, to just, you know, talk to the volunteers, say, by the way, we're leaving. And that way, we're gonna help them out, we don't want to impede whatsoever the traffic. Uh, we're gonna be helping everybody on the road if they need to come and go. Um, the other thing too is just, uh, there's also a neon spirit award, uh, that comes with it, right? If they want to actually decorate their house, or, uh, you know, put on go runners go. Um, the reality is, we have Steve Clark that's gonna be running the whole route, um, and he's gonna be actually, um, uh, judging for the non-spiritual, the non-spiritual award. So it's kind of cool, we're trying to get the residents kind of cheering, you know, and being part of it. Um, as for the E D R, um, we have two issues that might happen on that road. One is if ever the E D R, the four oh one is actually used. I've been told that if, uh, westbound, um, if the, uh, flow of traffic is actually, um, uh, diverted at Johnstown, it will come through Prescott on the south side. Um, and I've been told also the same thing will happen eastbound if it's, um, yeah, not Prescott, uh, sorry, I apologize. Maitland.
Maitland.
So it will actually go onto the south, uh, southbound. Um, it will never go through Edwards, I've been told. Uh, the county Prescott's not allowing it to go through Edwards, so it's, it's gonna go straight through the south part. Um, so what's happening is that we have an E D R route, that if that has, does happen, we will actually bring it for, uh, north. And, uh, the police officers will stay with us because we're, they're actually, uh, in our, um, in our service that evening. And we will actually be controlling the, uh, flow of traffic, uh, on the, uh, um, the, the path that goes over the train in, uh, Prescott. Um, but there is also another issue, and that is that solar field. I've been told that there's been flooding right near the, um, the train.
They're getting the subway.
That's, you're right, and it looks like for some bare reason, if that does get flooded, if we have a lot of rain or something like that, it gets flooded, we'll have to actually use E D R. So automatically, we're back into Prescott, so we won't be actually, we, we will make sure that our runners are safe at all costs in the silver traffic. Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, any other questions? Okay, so, um, thank you very much for your presentation and for taking me to answer committee's questions. So you don't have to stay too far on our agenda to hear, um, hear the consideration that your items given, so, thank you very much, sir. I will move on to item six A, and that is, um, the fire medic protection with the A M O briefing note, and I'll let the mayor speak to it.
I'm not gonna say too much, too, because I think the briefing note speaks for itself, and it, it comes from A M O, and A M O has provided us with the draft, uh, resolution, that, their draft motion that they're asking us to put forward. So, um, I'm looking for someone to bring it forward for the council meeting at the end of the month. Uh, as the briefing note points out, the last opportunity that we have to protect ourselves, uh, from the, um, arbitration awards is through the budget. And, uh, A M O's putting on a full-court press to try to get that to happen, so looking for somebody to move this and second it and get it on the agenda for the council meeting next week.
Okay, before, um, well, is there anyone, uh, is there anyone that wants to, uh, move this forward for our meeting next week? We can signal that now, and then, uh, under counselling brief notice of motion, we'll hear that. So the deputy mayor, is there a, will there be a secondary to sponsor the, the mayor's motion?
I have a question.
I, I don't think we can discuss it until we get it on the table, that's the thing.
Uh, well, we can, we can, it's a discussion item, so we can, we can discuss it at, at length, and then we can debate the, um, resol, the attached resolution that you're proposing to sponsor, um, next Monday.
So.
So we actually don't need, we don't, we don't need to identify a secondary at this time, so councillor Robb.
Well, I had a question, I just wondered, like, you know, I read it all, and, and it seems to make sense, and, and, uh, sometimes I, I, I fear that, you know, we get into this, uh, what is it? The sky's falling, or, or the wolf, the wolf, or, you know, prime wolf, oh, you know, and everything is new, or there's new, new, but, you know, we gotta do it, and it's going, and they're talking about this league arbitration, going, going to create more things down the road. But if you look into the second paragraph, you know, they're talking about, we've gotta stop this now, and basically, what, what they're talking about are, it, it's, it's a pilot project. And, and second paragraph says, whereas the government of Ontario is committed to proceeding with the pilot, the pilots, and enabling the, the fire medical model despite the absence of objective evidence. Well, how are you gonna get objective evidence if you don't try to pilot it and see how it works? It, it's kind of, to me, it's ambiguous. I just, I just found that paragraph, you know, most of them kind of, how to put it, they, you know, we're saying that there's not enough known about it, but they're trying to do a pilot to know about it. And, uh, and then again, the, we're now we're into arbitration, and firefighters are gonna get this on par with police, and it just, to me, it just becomes one big escalation, and, and, uh, I, I, again, you know? That's, that's how I see, that's that second paragraph, and I said, oh, well, I, you know, I read all the introduction, and I said, whereas the government of Ontario is committed to proceeding with the pilots, and enabling the fire medic model despite the absence. So they're, that's what a pilot is, to see if it's going to work. It's not, like, you know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, or if they've got people trained, they want to try it in one area too. And, and we certainly don't, I don't think have anybody with medical qualification to do it, so we wouldn't be hosting, intervolunteering hosts it, but other people might try to do it.
They're looking for.
They're looking for volunteers.
No, they're looking for two municipalities that will combine their fire medic services.
See, and see what.
And, 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 I'm, I'm thinking that the model requires that they, that they act interchangeably, Brian, or, fire chief may want to say more about this.
Yeah.
Uh, but I know that, uh, from my understanding of it, first of all, there isn't, there, there are no municipalities that are prepared to take on the pilot. That's the first thing, as I've understood it, and the second thing is, I understand, and Brian can say more. Uh, neither the fire departments want their medic responsibilities, and the medic response don't want the fire responsibilities, so, uh, but yet the government seems to be prepared to push it forward. And, uh, so, and what we're worried about is, is the escalating cost. Because there's absolutely no question that the arbitration awards, uh, as we go to arbitration in these various matters, the arbitration awards are always settled at the highest level. So that's, that's basically, we're trying to retract ourselves from the arbitration.
Uh, that's, yeah, I, okay, that's long way down, anyway, that, I, I guess if you got dual qualifications, fire department that has that, that, you know? I, I under, my understanding is that we don't have the ability to do a water rescue, or we don't have anybody trained to do that, and we don't do it because of the liability, and we stay away from those areas. So if we don't have anybody to do this, and we don't have anybody to train medic, it's not going to affect us. But if somebody, if some, does have medics in the fire department, and they arrive first on the scene, as opposed to the E M emergency vehicles. You know, I used to say that, you know, that it might not work in those cases, and then we get into arbitration, and, and, uh, I, I think it's, it's, you know, it's like the one percent issue, A M O gets on them, and that. I, I find we just have so many lobby groups, we have Roma, we have Good Roads Association, we have A M O, we have this, and everybody is just, I'm telling you, you don't, you wouldn't need an opposition in government, because you got everybody else that's there, you know what I mean? It doesn't matter, we see it locally here too, I know, but I just, I'm just amazed at the amount of groups that every time there's a, there's anything proposed or whatnot, it's, and the first thing we do is, we cut it off, you know what I mean? It's a pilot, they're looking for two pi, two pi, two places, and we, we obviously don't have the medics, so we wouldn't volunteer.
Thank you councillor, deputy mayor.
Um, the, the paragraph that concerns me in, in this is the fourth one. So, whereas in the absence of legislative protection, unwilling municipalities may be forced to enter into a pilot or adopt a fire medic model as a result of interest arbitration. So if the current rules or, or what the changes that the Looking Act will give the province the power to just pick two volunteers, that's right. This is a municipal decision, and the municipality should be able to choose, and so that's, that's the one that, that's the paragraph that stands out for me.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Smale.
That's what I was going to bring attention to, is I, I echo your concerns as well, I feel that this is kind of just, but I also see the value in protecting ourselves, even though it may not look like. But we do now have medics in Johnstown, and we do have two fire stations relatively close, so it very well could. Somehow, in their, their dream of perfect perfection in the provincial government, it might come back to, so that's my concern, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think, no.
Okay, chief, did you want to, um, uh, get in on this at all, uh, before it comes to our, on our agenda next week?
Um, sure, I believe this came from the, uh, Ontario Professional Firefighters Association, I believe that's where the roots of this, uh, this recommendation came from. So it is the proverbial can of worms, because you've got a professional association of firefighters, and a professional association of paramedics, and they're not really getting along too well these days. It was basically for symptom relief, so it was administering like aspirin, uh, glucagon, ventilin, the type of things that could make a difference on somebody's, uh, health if they arrived before, uh, before a, before an ambulance did. But, um, obviously, they'd have to be trained, and, uh, definitely, this is kind of a lur, a larger city pilot project they're looking at, it wouldn't be a, a volunteer organization, it'd be Ottawa, Toronto, or a major city, I would think. That's about all I, all I know about it.
Okay, thanks, chief. Um, so the deputy mayor has, uh, agreed that she'll bring it forward on her counselling, by his notice of motion, uh, to appear on next week's agenda. Um, if anyone, uh, if there's nothing further, then, uh, we'll move on to, if there's anything further, uh, we'll move on to item seven A. So we have, uh, a recommendation as pertains to the Fort Town Night Run. The committee recommends the council support and approve the request for partial road closure on Windmill Road for the Fort Town Night Run event on May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and notification be provided to affected, affected residents. Is there a move, councillor Smale, and seconded by the deputy mayor? Uh, any discussion on this, having just heard from our, um, presenter? Any, uh, staff comments in addition to the briefing note?
I, I believe Mr. LaRose, uh, covered the main areas.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed, and the motion is carried.
Good luck with your run.
Go home, or feel free to stay.
I'll stick around if you don't mind.
For sure, uh, so move on to item seven B, and that's mandatory certification and training. Uh, there is a, uh, two-pager there, and I'll invite, um, the chief to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in two thousand and thirteen, the fire marshal's office made an announcement that they intended to move away from the, uh, Ontario Fire Service standards and adopt the National Fire Protection Association professional standards. At the time, I think this was to keep, uh, keep a level playing field. Ontario was one of the last, uh, last areas that were kind of doing their own thing with their own programs, so certifications didn't match between provinces or between the United States and Canada. The Ministry of Community and Safety Correctional Services have proposed new requirements under the Fire Protection Prevention Act, that would require mandatory certification for firefighters. It's a proposed regulation currently in public consultation phase, with a March eleventh due date. They are proposing to establish mandatory certification requirements, uh, by the N F P A for all firefighters employed or appointed to a fire department after December thirty-first of this year. And that would include firefighters, pump operators, technical rescuers, fire officers, and fire educators. In addition, they are proposing that mandatory requirements, also set out by the N F P A, apply to existing firefighters who are currently employed. Uh, including fire inspectors, fire investigators, fire instructors, hazardous materials personnel, and fire dispatchers. Uh, those requirements are proposed to come into force January first, two thousand and twenty, uh, to give fire departments additional time to train and certify their staff. Although the proposed regulation only requires mandatory certification of firefighters starting after the end of this year. Uh, any firefighter without that certification or grandfathering from the past will find it difficult to advance their skills, because they may not possess the required prerequisites to move forward. The greatest challenge for this will be, uh, the time commitment required for a new member to achieve certification. Uh, the current window allowed is twenty-four months. To maintain our current level of service, we would require our firefighters to be trained to, uh, N F P A firefighter two. And that requires approximately two hundred and forty-four hours of training, if it's completed through the entire fire college. Um, extending the window to thirty-six months would, would be a more realistic timeframe for us to achieve the certification and maintain a, a balanced lifestyle for our volunteers. The mandatory training levels may cause members to reconsider their level of commitment as a volunteer. Uh, I think we will need to look at an appropriate reimbursement system to recognize the commitment dedication required to achieve those, uh, those goals. Obviously, there'll be budgetary implications, increase in training requirements will result in additional training expenses. Uh, in summary, the, the N F P A certification will present a challenge to all fire departments, who will require additional training resources and a substantial time commitment for firefighters. The Leeds and Granville fire chiefs have been working on a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding with the academic standards and evaluation branch of the O F M. To allow us to facilitate our own training and certification in-house within the county. If that is successful, we'll, that'll give us the ability to adjust, uh, our schedules to our liking that suits our members, and drastically reduce the costs by keeping it in, in-house. Although not without challenges, uh, the proposed training standards are achievable, they will provide much-needed consist, consistency between fire departments, improve firefighter safety, and enhance the level of service provided to the residents of Ontario.
So thanks, chief. From, uh, from my understanding, currently, the training that's provided at the, um, uh, fire college, is it done in, is any of it done in like weekend increments? Or is it all in multi-weekday blocks, like three and four and five day, weekdays?
There is a combination, if you go to the Ontario Fire College in Gravenhurst, it's, uh, one-week blocks currently.
Yep.
Um, they set up training at Lynn Hurst at the regional training school, that are a series of weekends.
Okay, so two hundred and forty-four, uh, is, s, two hundred and forty-four hours in weekends, that's sixteen weekends that we'd, that you'd have to ask your volunteers to give up just to meet the minimum standard. Is that, if they were able to break it into weekends?
Yes, there, there are, there are some items that are available online.
Okay.
And that type of thing, but, yes, I, I think firefighter one is, um, eight, eight weekends, I believe, maybe nine weekends for firefighter one.
Wow, that's a tremendous, tremendous commitment. It is, okay, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, well, I'm really worried about this, I mean, this is, uh, two hundred and forty-four hours, that's six weeks, uh, based on a forty-hour week. And, and what you're basically telling us is that, just to get a volunteer firefighter, it looks to me, it says suppression firefighters. That's the ordinary firefighter fighting fire.
Yes.
So that means any new volunteers that we bring on, after December the thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen, are gonna have to have two hundred and forty-four hours of training before they can be certified as a firefighter. Say goodnight to your volunteer fire departments, where are these guys that are whirling down jobs, gonna find two hundred and forty-four hours? That's unbelievable, you can't expect any man to give up two hundred and forty-four hours, six point one weeks, or as you put it, sixteen weekends to serve as a volunteer, how can it happen? This, you know, and you're right, I remember, I remember when this was discussed back in two thousand and thirteen, many of us were a little bit upset, and we could see this coming. Because most of us saw this as the beginning, or the push, or the mechanism through and by which the province would force us to full-time firefighters. And that's what this is doing. I mean, the cost, the budgetary cost to just this training for volunteers, provided we can find volunteers that'll put in that kind of training time, the cost of that, two the cost of that to us is not something that we can sneeze at. I'll tell you, we may find volunteers that are prepared to give up one week of their holidays to get 40 hours of training. But to get 244, we'll even be lucky to find employers that will allow them to go with the other five weeks. And they're sure as heck not going to go without us subsidizing their paycheck.
Or their expenses.
Or their expenses. And you know, now I'm beginning to understand, as much as I was against it, I was beginning to I'm beginning to understand where Holman was coming from with his county fire department. Because this is forcing us, this is forcing the cost back onto us. This is another move where the province is downloading an expectation onto us without any recompense for what it's going to cost. And this is pretty serious stuff. And I don't know, I mean, you're not asking for an action item here. I don't know what our our pressure point is or what our mechanism is to deal with this. But the way your briefing note is structured, it says the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office announced its intention to move away from the OFS standards and adopt the NFPA standards. And then it says Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services has proposed these new requirements to take effect January 118 and the discussion ends on March 11. So I guess our only mechanism to deal with this is to get our comments in before March 11. Do you have any idea of how the how the general public, not the general public, the general municipal, the general municipal groups are reacting to this? Or how are the fire, how are the volunteer firefighter, how are the volunteer fire chiefs reacting to this?
Through the chair, we we haven't had a meeting since since this came out. We're actually meeting tomorrow night. But I should I should clarify that the 244 hours that I that I I mentioned was if you went away to a college and took all the courses required. I think majority of this training can be done in-house. I mean, it's not going to be done in a in a six-month window. But over a course of of 24 or 36 months, I I think that this can be done locally.
And that's, I'm sorry, and that, Chief, that's if if the memorandum of understanding that's being worked on by your group is gets a positive reception.
Yes.
Okay. So Deputy Mayor.
So just to follow up with that memorandum of understanding, like, how is it going? Does it look like it's going to receive a positive acceptance from the fire marshals? Are you going? Because to me, I mean, you're you're saying from this, your my understanding is that you think that you'll be that you'll be able to work with the volunteers and fulfill despite the the very strong evidence coming down the pipe for the. So is that memorandum of understanding, is that your, is that what you're banking on for success moving forward in terms of keeping it volunteer and having people?
Through the chair, I believe that would make it a lot easier for for the fire departments. This is proposed regulation. So I mean, I'm sure the time limits will change and things are going to change as we go. The Ontario Fire Marshal's Office has made some some promises for additional additional training, additional courses and that kind of thing. But I wouldn't I wouldn't make a whole lot on on that coming through.
Okay. Councillor Robb, go ahead.
Through the chair. The 244 hours frightened me as well. And I saw them all together, but I know you're talking about from a two-year phase in to a three-year expanding would give you more time to do it. But I also, as we're talking about this issue, I'm I think I'm encouraged by the fact that you said that, you know, it'd be it could be phased in and could be done because I think there's a certain amount of training taking place ongoing all the time anyway within our department that the expectations are. And why I say that is I recall when our presence, acting C O, Mr. Grant was the chief. I recall a survey that you did and I think that you, about the time that the volunteer fire personnel put in extra, like the time they they put in, you know, their duties, it's about 20 hours. I think it came out something 20 hours per volunteer per month or something like that. Was that not something along those lines, 20 hours a month extra that they put in? And I I thought at the time, I said, gee, I I think if it if it were 20 hours, as I'm trying to vaguely remember, 20 hours a month times 12 months, that's you're talking 240 hours. That's you're that's six weeks, I think. And that's what I remember that survey. And it kind of, that's what really stuck out. It was about a four-year-old survey, I think, that you did back then, if I recall. And it was something like 20 hours. It really floored me that per month that they, you know, they averaged out to. That's what the the results of the in-house survey, you know, told. So I, you know, I'm flabbergasted by the 244, but I'm also encouraged by the fact that these people were putting in the extra time, you know, before. You know, I I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but I I know it's that 244 hit me like a ton of bricks too. And but, you know, at least I, you recall it, Mr. C O, former chief?
I can't recall the exact number, but I would think it would be in between 10 to 20 hours.
Councillor Schmell, if you have anything. Mr. Mayor.
Just a Brian, just a clarification question, actually. To become an FF2 certified firefighter, you would need an additional 244 hours. Is that the way I'm reading this?
Yes.
Okay, so how many of our firefighters now hold the WW, or sorry, FF2 certification?
Certification?
Yes.
We have two members that have firefighter one and two certification.
Okay, so the others, the others that don't have that certification, they've been doing ongoing training. Now, does that apply against this 244? Or is this an additional 244 hours?
I guess it depends on if the if the training applies. There are there are certain skills that are involved in firefighter one and two. So they're very, you have to demonstrate skills. There are skill sheets for every little skill you do. So we have already started. If our training ropes and knots, we do the skill sheets for the NFPA ropes and knots. So so we're going through them as they're completed, as they come up, if that makes sense. But not every bit of our training applies to firefighter one and two because we've got traffic control, pump up, you know, many other things to do too.
Okay, so I I guess just just for clarification, the firefighters that are now with us and doing doing their job, if they wanted to achieve the number two certification, they have to do 244 hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. So we'll move to final comments and then we'll move on with our next item, Deputy Mayor.
Good question.
Yep.
So you're you're saying that, I just want to understand, there's a handbook that we have now that the township, I think, put together. And does that handbook say that they have to have their firefighter's one within 24 months or something to that effect? Is there is there a guideline that that's been established that says they have the 24 months to get that level or A level?
I don't believe so.
No, okay. Because the way that you've written this, it says the new members currently allowed 24 months to get the, is that's not ours? That's the national fires?
That that is the proposed regulation.
Okay, so you're recommending you would like to see the regulation be 36 months instead of 24. So is that a recommendation that you're making to the national? Do you and are you looking for township for council support for that recommendation or?
Through the through the chair, I'll be making a comment, submitting my comments. And that will be one of the things that I will be recommending. And I know the Ontario Association of Fire Chiefs have several recommendations that that they're going to be pushing for also.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
So two comments that I want to make. To start with, the 20 hours that the guys put in, roughly 20 hours a month right now, not all of those 20 hours could be deemed to be training hours to fulfill these 244 hours requirement. Because, you know, I mean, they're at the they're at the fire station for 20 hours a month, but not all of it's what you might call certified certifiable training. That's the first comment. The second comment that that I'd like to make, I mean, the the deadline for consultation phase here is March the 11. We have a we have a council meeting next week. Personally, I'd like to see a motion coming forward with a couple of wherases in it that would then go to a rationale or a a an operative clause that would ask two things. First of all, extend the window to the 36 months. That's the first thing. But then secondly, I think some relief on the 244 hours of training. That's, I'd like to see a motion like that come forward. I'm not saying that passing that motion is going to have any effect whatsoever on the Ministry of Community and Social, Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services. Probably won't have any effect on them whatsoever. But on the other hand, if there's 444 motions from 444 municipalities, maybe will. There won't be because many of them have full-tucked departments, but we don't.
So Chief, you're meeting with your colleagues tomorrow, you said?
That is correct.
And so what should we expect then through our package this Friday for the upcoming council meeting on on Monday, that there would be a motion looking for support from council?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
I don't think I got to the deputy mayor's question about the the memorandum of understanding. I was speaking to the our mutually coordinator and unfortunately, he's no longer the coordinator. So he's the one that has been working on the memorandum, but he's no longer our coordinator. So there'll be some follow-up. He was very encouraged. He said everything was going very well the last the last time we spoke, but we'll be getting together with him probably in two weeks to take the ball and run with it.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there a replacement for him in the works or on?
I'm assuming that will be a topic of discussion tomorrow night.
Okay, so thank you very much. Thanks for responding to that question, Chief. The next item is C tanker Three Pumper repairs. Do you have any comments, Chief, that you'd like to make on this background? Or I think there's probably a couple of quick questions for you. No comments? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the fact that we get it stolen in the F L R when there are screens in place. Are there any kind of an explanation for that?
Through the chair.
Damaged screens, do we know?
No, I can't. I can't explain. The only way that it can get to the pump without going through a screen is out of the tank. So if somehow it got put in the tank, again, it's an 18-year-old truck. The stones could have been there from the from the day we bought it. I I don't know.
Any other questions on that? Yeah. Okay, well, Andy, thank you. Move on to seven D. And that is the M N R F Emergency Management Overview. And Director of Operations, Mr. Grant, would you like to speak to this information item?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just basically an overview of the sorry, of the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry of sort of the contact information and some resources with respect to supplies, with respect flooding, bags, those items that may be available or at least locations where where they could be purchased. So this will basically just be added to the emergency, the emergency control group's urgency plan as a resource.
Okay. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Okay, so the way I read this is that Ministry of Natural Resources has some assets that are available.
What?
It doesn't matter what those assets are. The request pretty well has to come through Emergency Management Ontario from the local municipality through Emergency Management Ontario to M N R F.
Yes, basically through the provincial Emergency Management Operations Centre.
Okay, go ahead.
Second question, if I can, through the chair. I keep getting, and I don't know where it's coming from because I don't recognize the sources, but I keep getting all of these predictions about flooding this year on the seaway, on the river because of the high water levels, Lake Superior, Lake Ontario and all the other lakes. And they're predicting, at least the things that I'm reading, are predicting that the water levels that we're going to see under St. Lawrence will be even higher than they were last year, which leads to my question, do we have sandbags installed?
Through the chair, yes, we do have sandbags installed.
Second question, are we are we prepared for higher levels than last year? You know, I mean, I I don't want to be alarmist about this and I think half the stuff that I'm reading is so alarmist, I don't know whether to discount it totally or just have. But are we prepared, any level of preparedness?
I would certainly say we're more prepared than we were last year with respect to to that high water level. And I believe that we'll have a quicker response, should should add that.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Are there plans to just back up and shore out the water treatment plant prior to the having the, let's not wait for the flood to come. Let's maybe be a little bit prepared around it as opposed to letting the waters come up a little bit too close to the building?
Through the chair, that's that is the anticipated plan as a monitor.
And are we going to send, I know that there is notices that go on Facebook and through everything by the water people there, the authorities, but are we going to send any warnings to some of the residences that were impacted hugely last year?
Through the chair, I think as as we get some information and depending on that advance notice, we'll certainly.
Okay, thanks very much.
Just one other question, picking up on Deputy Mayor's question. I think we learned last year where about, I'm going to use a number, 15 to 20 really sensitive lots or residences were located. Do we have sort of a record of those 20 or 30 lots where there were serious problems? And do we have a communication mechanism to get in touch quickly with those 20 to 30 or whatever it happens to be property numbers? Like, have we got their their names, email addresses, telephone numbers and that kind of thing all in one spot so that we can get in touch with them quickly?
Through the chair, I can't confirm we have all that information, but I know that there was a list generated through South Nation Conservation. I can't I can't say off the top of my head if it had all of their contact information but location for sure.
I I know Sandra does have the a lot of that information as to whether it's email addresses. I would not, I would be surprised if she had that much. But I know that when we were out there, some of the properties, the owners weren't on the property. It was some caregiver or caretaker that had kind of shown shown up and noticed it and was trying to contact the owners for advice on how to move ahead. So I'm just brainstorming right here. What if this summer, when the owners are on the property, some contact might be made to get that information so that we can make them aware that the sandbags will be available, but they need to make sure that someone is there to to take them or somehow pre-coordinate?
But picking up through the chair, if I have any picking up on that. I don't want us to be in a position where we're relying on South Nation to notify our residents and our taxpayers of an impending problem. I can I can see us working in partnership with them, but I think the first responsibility to notify them, once we are of the opinion that we've got a serious situation developing, I think the responsibility lies on us to be the first person or the first entity to contact them. So if it's appropriate, Mr. Chair, I would like to task the staff or I think the council should task the staff with assembling that that group of names, the properties, the names, if it's not an owner, it's a tenant and preferably both, the email addresses and assembling all of that information probably within the next four to six weeks before the actual melt occurs and the water level starts to rise.
So that that resource exit, Mr. Grant, that resource. So that resource exists, Mr. Grant, that resource exists currently with South Nation? They have, like, they have a starter list, like a stepping off point? Because if we're just going to go by memory, that might be a bit, a big task.
During last year's event, the township and South Nation partnered to get that list together.
Right.
We do have that list. It's been a while since I've looked at it, so I certainly can't tell you whether every phone number and contact information is readily available. Some of those locations are seasonal, and we don't have great detailed information on that. But we can certainly look at some avenue. We may be able to put some notice in the tax flyer when it goes out for those affected last year.
So does that, so with that from Mr. Grant, does that find support with the committee? Everyone's comfortable with that? Okay, so does that satisfy your request or suggestion, Mr. Mayor? Perfect, okay. That's, that will serve our residents well. Thank you very much. Item seven E is the Water and Wastewater Financial Update, and it's an information item. Mr. Grant, did you want to provide any context to this or just field questions from committee if they have any?
I think mainly just fielding questions. It's a variance report, basically, for the year end. Most, if not all, the systems were in line with what we had projected. So I guess if there are any specific items.
Yep, okay, so we'll start with the Deputy Mayor this time.
Mine's just a general specific item. So that, it says for the period, December 31st, 2017. That is, there are no outstanding numbers to go in here. That's final.
That is ninety-nine point nine-nine percent final as of February 14th.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm resting my questions on that premise. And I'd like to look at each one of these, and I have a reason for doing that. First of all, I'm looking at Spencicle wastewater, and I see the revenue of one thirty-eight, the expenditure of one twenty-four. So I've got an operational overage of fourteen thousand. Now, my question is, and I believe the answer, I believe I know the answer, but through the chair, my question is, is that an automatic transfer to the appropriate reserve fund? And the reason I ask that is because I think that's a matter of policy, but yet I don't see that in the information about our reserve and our reserve funds that we got on February the ninth. And I realize that the date on this is, well, actually, the date on this is February the second. And this report with the reserve and the reserve funds is dated February the ninth. So the reserve fund report that I got does not show that fourteen thousand going into the reserve fund. And I have similar questions for all of the others that have overages. And then there's the odd one that has a shortage. And for example, when I look at the industrial park wastewater, we overspent in that one. I think probably the major reason for the over expenditure is the professional fees, and we all know what that's about. But it doesn't matter how you cut the cake, we're thirty-six thousand dollars over expended in that account. And my question is, how do we deal with that over expenditure? And I know that there could be several different answers. We just leave it on the books and pick it up over the next period of time, and I would assume that there's a receivable attached to that, and we all know where that receivable is coming from. But I, and then I'm just asking those questions.
Okay, so, Mr. Grant, the questions from the mayor are, have the transfers for surplus revenues been made to the appropriate reserve funds accounts? That's question one.
Yeah, through the chair, what I can say is that they will be. But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the treasurer is waiting for the final audit to ensure that there is nothing, once the final audit numbers are there, then that transfer with respect to surplus or deficit will occur.
Okay, and then for the thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eight cents, which the mayor categorized as professional or suspected professional services?
That is, that is the major overage on that.
Okay, and so where's that, where's that funded from? It's marked as a receivable until the account is resolved?
Correct, I understand.
Okay. Was there a further, did you, did you have another question? Were there any other questions from the committee?
Can I just go?
Yep.
I'm just going to go if you don't, if you bear with me through the chair. Just one, where I have a question popping up on my screen, just page one. I know that the results were a surplus there that the mayor alluded to. But I'm just wondering, I noticed, now, just for clarification purpose, I think maybe there's a problem with, I think the one was the ninth that the mayor referred to, and I think this one here is the second, the fourteenth, it's the fourteenth of February, right? So it's five days beyond what the mayor had for reserves? Would that be correct there? We're looking at that rate? So it's late, it's a little later coming in rather than what we had before.
Well, yeah, they're not all the same date, but...
So, no, so, so anyway, just chemicals and supplies. I see we saved, that was quite a, to me, that was a considerable savings there. We saved fourteen thousand total, but we only used two thousand of an expected, I think, ten thousand five and so forth. So we saved eight thousand right there, so that was over half of the change. Why less with a rainy year and so forth? And that was one of my questions.
Through the chair, what we've done this year is typically some of our purchases that we make in the fall, for instance, to activate for a full year. But what we're doing this year is actually charging that to the actual year that it's being used. That's why you see that lower chemical usage, so that we can get a more accurate rate moving forward with respect to those chemicals.
Okay, again, let's go then to the next page, I guess Edwardsburg Water Distribution Report, the Johnstown one the mayor alluded to. If you look down to the expense column, second last expense there was the Prescott water cost and what it was a year before, and then what we budgeted, and we're over there by eight thousand. Is this a surprise, or I just wonder why we were over there more?
With respect to the Prescott water cost?
Fifty-three, five, six, three, one, down there at the bottom. Am I, am I right? Eighty-three thousand, we, that was our budgeted, and we spent ninety-one thousand, and I just wondered if there were some surprises through the town that we weren't expecting.
There was, through the chair, there was a high water use at one of the industrial facilities that we had an increase in water usage and sewer usage for about a two-month period that we've been working on.
Anything else on that, Mr. Mayor?
Same question. And I remember that situation that you're talking about now, but my question is a kind of a different one. We actually purchased water in cash flow cash to the town of Prescott with the understanding that whereas last year we were paying one and a quarter times the Prescott rate, we would now be paying just the Prescott rate with no inflationary clause in it. So my question is, can we tell from our invoices that we're not paying the one and a quarter times the Prescott rate? We're just paying the normal rate? I mean, that was part of the deal. I can understand volume being having an effect, but it seems to me that we would have to have a tremendous volume effect to go from eighty-three budgeted to ninety-one actual when we were actually intending to see a reduction.
Correct, so if I may, through the chair, we can definitely confirm that we're not receiving that surcharge from our invoices. However, in those two months or so where we had additional flow, we were above that quantity, and there is a surcharge based on that, based on our overage for that two-month period. That's where you're getting that expense.
Okay.
Did we not recoup that owning cost back to the user?
A large portion. So we're still, we're still under in what we anticipated.
Okay, all right, thank you, Councilor Morrell, continuing.
If I may, go on, let's go to the Cardinal wastewater report, period one. I'm just assuming there, the second, the second line at five twenty-four, the actual seventeen, it's work in progress, I guess, that we're happening. We're a little over, I guess, ten, ten thousand. And let's look at the contract fee down halfway the page there. I just wondered about that, where did?
That's five three two six?
Yeah, five three two six contract fee. It's, we were over there a little bit. I just wondered why the contract, we budgeted forty-three and we spent fifty-five.
Yes. Sorry, let me just refer to, yes. So that particular contract fee in the wastewater system was under budgeted for. If you compare it to the water system, it's around fifty to fifty-two.
You just, you just, you watched it low, but it was under budgeted under what it should have been?
I would say that I missed one of our contracts that we have, when we mentioned last year.
Okay, all right.
Did you want to know that point there, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, second question with the same sheet. So in that particular account, we had budgeted to receive the hundred and six thousand in an infrastructure grant. And I see that from the actual columns, we didn't receive that grant. But it looks to me like we did the capital works of eighty-three thousand in spite of the fact that we didn't receive the grant. And that is basically what resulted in the loss in that account. We've got an eighty-five hundred, eight thousand dollar loss there. So generally, when we're planning a grant, the understanding is if we don't get the grant, we're not going to do the work. But I'm assuming that there must have been some kind of extenuating circumstance here where we decided to go ahead and do the capital in spite of the fact that we didn't get the grant. Am I, am I getting that in my head right?
Through the chair, partially. There was a capital project that was planned to go through, which was the realigning Waddell to Walter Street. That did proceed. We have had some expenses associated with that infrastructure grant, which is the CWWF. But the majority of that, if not all of that, will be whipped over until the project is completed in 2018. As a note, we are in deficit of eighty-five hundred, but we had, within our budget, to transfer from reserves thirty-five thousand, so.
We didn't do that?
We were not able to do that.
Councilor Morrell.
And just, let's go to the Cardinal water report, and I just see there where, well, I noticed the grant was less. We received one hundred and five thousand, and there's a hundred and twenty-six of the forty-one thousand left there. But the good news was that I think our budgeting was the metering and the, between the fixed costs and the variable rates, I think we finally, perhaps it was a good year for catch-up or whatever and so forth, as prior to, that we collected an extra twelve thousand there and so forth. Am I correct there that our actual budgeting expectation based on the water fixed costs and the variable rates are starting to balance out?
Through the chair, yes. We had anticipated to available to five hundred and eight thousand through our fixed and variable charges. I would, the feeling would be that the additional variable usage.
Usage.
Okay.
And with respect to the grant, same item, the exterior coating of the water tower was completed. That was submitted for our funding for that portion, and that's the one hundred and five thousand. So the other, or the other project is being carried over and in the process in 2018.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. So you did not raise them to the books?
Yeah. So thank you very much for that, and we'll move on to item seven F. Seven F, and that's the 2017 annual water reports for Cardinal and Edwardsburg and Edwardsburg Industrial Park, sorry, and Cardinal System. So there's a recommendation that committee recommends that council receive the 2017 annual water reports for CWS and EDS, and direct staff to post annual water reports to township website, and direct staff to notify users via social media and local newspapers of report availability. Is there a mover for that? Mr. Cameron, and seconded by Counselor Smale. Any questions for the Director of Operations on the recommendation? Deputy Mayor.
Page two of five asks for a brief description and a breakdown of monetary expenses, but no breakdown of monetary was provided. Is that something they're going to be concerned about?
Through the chair, no, I don't believe so. This isn't in the standard template that we've been using with the monetary expenses, just as more of a preventive maintenance was monetary expenses are typically shown in our variance reports.
Okay, so, but they were significant expenses? I mean, that's what you're telling them here, right? Were any significant expenses incurred to install, repair, and replace required equipment?
This is page, what, two of six?
Two of five?
Two of five, so we're talking about the, the industrial park.
Oh, right, one seventy, oh, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance and not let them laugh and say, we're going to give you a bad mark because you did put dollars in.
Now, if they do, then we have changed from the previous one.
Because I saw on page two of five, you referred to it, says where were any significant expenses incurred?
I guess there's a two, four, there's two different documents here, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, so going to the last, the last, second last page.
Yes, two of five.
Yes, so it's asking them to list all, where there were significant expenses that were incurred to do these things.
It says worse.
Were any, and he's saying, yes, we installed, repaired, replaced, and these were significant expenses.
Yeah.
And then it says, please provide a brief description and a breakdown of monetary expenses. I've seen no dollars and cents.
Yeah, I got you, but in past submissions, we haven't included the breakdown without.
But it's not a new ask either? Okay, thanks.
Any, anything else?
I just, can I just, through the chair, through the chair, again, just, oh, which one is it? The Cardinal water system, there are six pages there, so let's go to page. Three of six, that part there about an incident date, if we had an incident with regard, I think it was the sodium, high in sodium content, I guess, on July the fourth of 2017.
Correct.
Maybe it was run out from all the fireworks across the river first half, you know, and had sodium in the fire practice. I don't know, but anyway, it's an opportunity. But just wondering if everything's fine with that, what would happen? It wasn't over much, I don't think. What's the, what's the bar, like, what's, do we try to keep it at twenty point six?
Twenty.
It was twenty?
Yeah, the bar is twenty.
And we were twenty point six, so we're just over, so.
Correct.
Any, any reason?
At that particular time, the raw water had elevated sodium, so we will always have a corresponding elevation in the potable with the chemical that we use.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund Transfer Payment Agreement, Project Deadline Amendment. And there's a recommendation, the committee recommends that council consider a law to authorize the execution of the extension amendment of the agreement with the province of Ontario for the clean water and wastewater funding. Is there a mover for the motion?
So.
Moved by the mayor and seconded by Counselor Morrell. Any questions?
Do we actually, as a township, do we need the extension? I can understand us executing the agreement, but do we actually need it?
Through the chair, we're anticipating for one project, the Adelaide Street project, that we would require.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we'll move on to item seven H, and that's the 2003 case loader. And there is a, there are a couple of options there, and there is a recommendation. Is anyone prepared to remove that four-part recommendation as it stands? Councilor Smale? And is there a seconded for the recommendation in its four part? Okay, seconded by the mayor. And so that recommendation is that committee recommends that council direct staff to include loader trade-in as part of the lease agreement to lower monthly payments and proceed with a forty-eight month leasing option for a replacement loader through equipment sales and services limited at three thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents per month, and reallocate the thirty thousand dollar taxed for truck one replacement with fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents to public works vehicle expense and fourteen thousand forty-eight dollars and forty cents to public work reserves, and execute the required contract documents. Questions for the Director of Operations?
Well, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair. I had some discussion with the director about this. I guess what's bothered me is I couldn't resolve in my own mind whether this was a problem with the equipment or the repair shop. Because we did spend, as the briefing note indicates, we did spend a pretty significant amount of money on this piece of equipment in twenty seventeen, late in twenty seventeen, and it looks like this particular illness, whether it continued or didn't develop, I don't know, but I know with any piece of equipment, it gets to the point where you have to cut your losses and you get rid of it, and it looks like that's what they decided to do. I think they financed it, what I would call appropriately, so I'm prepared to go with the recommendation.
Okay, Councilor Morrell?
I agree, I kind of, but there is one but. But both options appeal to me, and I'll tell you why. As you know, last week I was quite mad about the truck, you know? We had this plan of replacing, and so we don't get into pain. You know what I mean? We don't get into that expense and we replace our capital costs, the truck was five or eight years or twelve years, whatever. And we're talking about putting in, because it's a higher priority, the loader is a higher priority, I see that, and we're putting a truck now off, I see that. However, and I'm going to be, how do I put this phrase this properly? I also see opportunity in your other option about transferring from reserves and doing so. For the simple reason that we get the best of both worlds, number one, we get the loader that's a priority, number two, we keep on track with our truck replacement on schedule and not throwing things off kilter if it's a capital plan of five years or ten years and so forth. And the other thing is, this is an election year, and I don't know whether who or what who will be sitting around this table in the years' time hence going over the budget. But I would think that if the staff were there and there's a new council here, they would have, the first thing that's like, I think of my friend, Mr. Spencer, and how he fought for about three years to get his deep fryer, the sixty-five hundred dollar deep fryer. And here we are going after, you know, like the truck, we're putting it on the back burner. But if somebody, let's say runs for council, gets elected on, you know, the tax proceed, you know, I'm not going to tax him with a tax, I know how to run that township. And you can say, well, last year's council said we'll do this funding and we'll put truck on hold for thirty thousand for a year. Oh, the truck's easy to say the first to go, like the deep fryer, we'll just put that on another year hold and so forth. Whereas if you got the truck and you got the loader and you've got a game plan to finance it, it's a lot easier for them to say there's eighteen or nineteen thousand that was anticipated because of the financing of the loader and that truck. To put it back into reserves, anybody new would be more apt to do so. That's, you know, I can see both, I can vote both ways, but I'm just saying, in the long term, I know what the CAO has presented here, and I can go with that, but I'm just saying for anyone new around this table, it's so, it'll be so easy next year when that thirty thousand, the previous council said we'll put that aside for a year. Oh, we can do another year without that truck.
Thank you, Councilor Morrell.
Have I made my point? Therefore, that's where I'm coming from. It's easier to say nineteen grand for a reserve would be more acceptable.
So we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed?
undecided.
Okay, so can I just get an indication? All in favor? So I have one, two, three, four, all opposed? And abstention, that's a nay, the recommendation's carried. So we'll move on to item eight, council inquiries and notices of motion. You have an inquiry or notice of motion?
Do I?
No. Councilor Morrell? Anything for item eight?
I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor?
Just two quick things. First of all, just a reminder to all the council.
For, for, sorry, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay. And Mr.? Okay. So inquiries and notice of motion, so I don't want to presuppose the outcome of our meeting with our solicitor, but we, council did receive correspondence from Mr. Johnson on the subject of the environmental review tribunal, so I'll put it down as a tentative request that we entertain his request at our council meeting next Monday. So we'll see, we'll see what comes out of, what report we have out of our closed session. And now on to the mayor's report.
So just two things. Just a reminder to council, the First Responders United will hold an open house information session at United Church in Cardinal with their First Responders Program on next Thursday at one o'clock, and they've invited all of the county council members to come, and so I'm just extending the same invitation to our council. And then the last thing is the Seventh Prescott Scouting Group will have their eighty-eighth anniversary on Thursday night. I can't attend, so I'm just going to take the little scroll and I'll deliver it directly to, I'll deliver it directly to Wayne Reed and express my apologies for not being present.
Okay. So then we'll move on to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item ten, questions? I think from the gentleman in the second row, I'm guessing. Any questions, sir? No? Okay, perfect. So move on to item eleven A, and that's land tribunal and the minutes of closed session dated January fifteenth. Do us that motion to go into closed session? No, I think that's a lot of these.
I mean, I don't know. There's nothing on.
Yeah, there's nothing on mine either. All right. Move by myself, seconded by Mr. Cameron.
The deputy clerk is indicating that it is on your desk.
It is on mine, I'm reading it, okay. I'm still beat on that. The Committee of the Whole proceeds into closed session at seven fifty PM in order to address matters pertaining to land render tribunal and minutes of closed session dated January fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
Perfect. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried, we'll move into closed session after the clear of the council chambers.
Question. During the open meeting of committee, as the whole does now resume at eight thirty-five.
Can you have a second here?
Uh, Mr. Cameron, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cameron? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion is carried, so I'll give the deputy clerk a second there to, you're all set? Okay. So reporting out from closed session, committee received legal advice on the land tribunal hearing as it relates to council's position on the sale of ED nineteen. And closed session minutes, moved by the mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that the minutes of the closed session dated January fifteenth be approved? All in favor? All opposed? Thus carried. And so one correction to the agenda, item eleven B is not a closed session item. Item eleven B regarding the JRDR is an open session item and will receive an update from Mr. Leroy, and I declared an interest in this item, so I'm just going to vacate the chair and the mayor will chair it. Yep?
May I ask the solicitor a question probably?
Sure.
Just, I just want a clarification. If, through this process, let's say a member, a local member of parliament has been vocal and made presentation and made support or talked to the legislature on that issue, and then now that the three to tribunal stage has removed themselves, is that, would that member of parliament, or provincial parliament, still have the entitlement to go with the president or?
He would never, ever, ever go with that.
That'd violate the members' conflict of interest, that.
He would never, ever, ever go into a tribunal hearing and he would not be heard. No, I've never seen a politician at a municipal board or.
So he couldn't be anyone that was three, he wouldn't hear it, go and so forth, and present, okay? I just want, and another point, I just, I'd like to ask you this question. The mayor is, like we said, he's in a quandary, he's got some people voting, and now, you know, if I, I have my own perception as to people voting on county council about this issue and how the voter, whether it belongs, but we're in a delicate balancing act here. It's here and there are some benefits to the township that are not presented to the well-known throughout the township. If the mayor presents something, or we present this, not a one post aspect, there's always a chance of further negotiations if, should they proceed down the road on the path that they were on, you know, public to private ownership, that we could lose here big time because of the stance that we've taken. Do you follow what I'm saying?
The chair will not allow the question. It would be inappropriate to receive solicitor advice in an open session. So that's a closed session item, and so if we're going to receive advice from our solicitor, it should be done in closed session. So to move on with orders of the day, item eleven B is the drainage hearing, and we'll hear an update from Mr. Leroy, and the mayor will chair it.
So all just over here, the chair there, but anyway, Leroy, you're on.
Okay, council, I'll be very brief. We received interim decision from the referee. The important point is found on page two of the judgment. Mr. Wright has directed council, has directed council to pass a resolution appointing A.J. Robinson. That's page three of the document, page two of the order. Subparagraph two, I won't read the whole thing out, but that's a resolution that has to be passed. What Mr. Wright has done is essentially segregated the litigation into two branches. Mr. Robinson is going to attend at the Bruce property and the Carmichael property, which are the two properties that were improperly chained for the report of an engineer, and he's going to incorporate those properties or decide that they're okay as they are. The cost of that report will be assessed normally, so.
Go to the benefit of the land?
Yeah, back to the drain. Now, that's just the incorporation cost. So Mr. Wright's concern is that this work was done without the benefit of an engineer's report, and we don't want the drain being compromised by that work, so we're going to make sure that the drain is functioning properly. The work that was done, so the thirty-six thousand or whatever it was, that was the cost of the Bruce crossing, is still an open matter for litigation, and that's going to be addressed by way of hearing. Okay? As well as the cost of the litigation. So all of that has to be addressed probably at a hearing in April or May, and your solicitors will give you further advice on that, but for today, we've been ordered to pass this resolution for A.J. Robinson, we went to the field, assess those drains, incorporate them into the larger measure.
Okay, so having, having received this now tonight at this meeting, the appropriate thing to do would be for us to, we're directed to pass this resolution.
That's right.
So the appropriate thing to do would be to put this resolution on the agenda for our council meeting next week and to pass it actually without debate.
Exactly. And that wording is the wording, you've got to use it, council had the opportunity to make submissions on it, so that's a, that's the wording.
So that's the exact wording of the resolution.
Do you need a motion from this table? Yeah?
I would say not, we've been basically directed.
Okay.
So, and then we proceed from there? Okay. Now, here's my question to you then. Mr. Robinson, as we know, is the only drainage engineer in eastern Ontario. Is there a timeline that we can expect this thing to move forward?
I can advise, well, there's two sets timelines at this point. For the litigation, my hope is that we would have a hearing date sometime in the spring of two thousand and eighteen. When you read the reasons, you'll see that I think Mr. Wright is anticipating a fairly summary hearing.
Okay.
For the litigation side things. For the integration work into the drain, I can advise that Mr. Robinson reported that likely he's looking at the fall of two thousand and eighteen before his report is prepared, and that was a very loose estimate.
Okay. And then in the question of, in the question of costs, does the, is the individual who performed the work incur any exposure here? Who performed this work without benefit of an engineer's report? Does this individual incur any liability or any cost?
That might be a legal opinion, but I can probably safely say is that Mr. Robinson has been directed to assess the work as he sees fit. So I would expect that if he found that work done at the Carmichael property had to be repaired, I would be very surprised if the rest of the drain bore that expense.
Oh, thank you very much. Anybody else have questions for folks here? Okay, so thank you very much.
Okay, so our last item on the agenda, adjournment, moved by the deputy mayor, seconded.
Well, I have to finish business. Have we done? Well, unless you want to hear the discussion about our level of participation, I think we really need to discuss what our level of participation is going to be at the pre-hearing. I mean, clearly, you indicated that we have free presenter participant party status, but we also have the option of as an observer, which would be just if somebody wants to go and sit in the room, right?
So.
Your very presence in the room has a message.
Not likely.
Not likely, okay.
So that item, so that item, we can bring it forward to council on Monday, Mr. Mayor? For discussion?
That's fine with me.
Is there anything else before a motion to adjourn? Okay, and I had the mover for a motion to adjourn was?
I have the motion.
Okay.
We adjourn at eight forty-four.
So moved by Councilor Morrell and seconded by?
Seconded by mayor's say.
All in favor? All opposed? Thus carried. Thank you, gentlemen, thanks very much.
You guys are all.